Buenas tardes, ahora es diez de la noche en Los Ángeles.
Todavía no están puestos. Todavía no. Tenemos nueve miembros, estamos parando por uno más. Ahora pueden empezar la sesión del martes. La señora Halcio Park, esta es la lista de ausentes. Por favor, ven a la cámara.
Buenos días. Ahora ya tenemos un cuarto. Esta es una reunión del Consejo de Los Ángeles para el jueves 12 de mayo. Señor fiscal, por favor, llame al grupo.
Cartez, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ledlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vida, Gosa, White, Zine, Padilla, diez miembros presentes y un cuarto.
Diez miembros presentes y un cuarto.
Sí, señor presidente. Primero el orden de trabajo es llamar al comentario público. Hay un número de tarjetas de comentario publicados. Déjame llamar estos nombres y pedirles que se muevan al palo. Aurelio Gonzalez, Cooper Fino, Eraso, Miguel Ángel Pérez, Margarita Sanchez, María Jesús Rodríguez. Por favor, se muevan.
Oh, no, eso es un valor. Buenas tardes. Nosotros somos campesinos de la cuarenta y uno y Alameda. Somos campesinos. Somos agricultores de sur centro. La razón por la que estamos aquí es... Pidiéndoles a ustedes, señores concejales... Pidiendo a la gente del consejo... Que por favor consideren nuestra situación. Y por favor, nos dejen trabajar en la tierra que estamos cultivando. Gracias.
Buenos días.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es María Rodríguez.
Mi nombre es María Rodríguez.
Yo estoy aquí representando al grupo. Yo quiero que nos ayuden a quedarnos ahí.
A cultivar nuestras plantas. A trabajar nuestras plantas como mexicanos que somos.
Y aquí estamos si no nos vamos.
Y aquí estamos y no nos vamos.
Mi nombre es Federico.
Federico Vargas.
Vargas.
Yo tengo diez hijos de familia.
Tengo diez hijos en mi familia. Y necesitamos un pequeño pedazo para enseñarles cómo se da la producción. Y por eso queremos que nos dejen allí. Y queremos que nos dejen allí. Gracias. Buenos días. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Cooper Eraso. Soy agricultor de la cuarenta y uno y Alameda. Y les pedimos que sigan trabajando allí. Que nos trabajen allí. Gracias.
Buenas tardes, miembros del consejo de los Ángeles, de nuevo. Mi nombre es Nadine Diaz.
My name is Nadine Diaz and I'm here on behalf of the USC School of Social Work graduate students. And we are here to support the farmers and to emphasize that we will be here and we hope to work collectively with all of you for the betterment of the farm and the farmers. Thank you.
Again, Miguel Ángel Pérez. Como parte del South Central. Aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Here are the liberty, thank you.
There were no other cards submitted for the public comment, so the public comment period is now closed. Mister Clerk, receive of the agenda.
First order is for one minute.
Mr. Weiss moves, Mr. Zine seconds, the minutes are approved.
The communitaria resolutions are approved.
Those are also approved.
Before beginning the agenda, there's been a request by the city attorney to continue closed session items number forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six to Tuesday, May eighteenth.
All right, without objection, those closed items will be, closed session items will be continued.
On the regular agenda, items one through six are street lighting district items confirming the assessments and/or abandoning proceedings.
There are no cards submitted, so I will open the hearing and close the hearing. Those matters are now before us. There are no protests.
No hay protestas.
Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, items one through six are before us. Open the roll.
Close the roll.
Tabulate the vote. Tabulate the vote. Those are approved.
Items seven through seventeen are items for which public hearings have been held on nine and sixteen, a motion is required inasmuch as there are two reports on one file.
All right, members, item seven through seventeen are before us. Are there any specials? Seven through seventeen. And item sixteen has a housing report in Congress and Indian National Resources. Number seven is called special by Mr. Labange. Any other items, members? Let's call sixteen special just to resolve the two motions.
Especial para resolver las dos resoluciones de los reportes.
The rest of the items, through fifteen, and item seventeen are now before us. Open the roll.
Close the roll.
Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those are approved.
Number nine.
Number nine will be sent forthwith.
And is any staff here for seventeen?
Oh, okay, so Mr. Labange would like to talk to you. Mister Clerk?
Items eighteen through thirty-eight are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration, and I do believe there is amendment being distributed for item twenty-one.
All right, first let me note that there are no cards submitted to speak on items eighteen through thirty-eight, so I will open the public hearing, close the public hearing. These matters are now before us, members. Mister Carters calls twenty-one special. Other specials, members, eighteen through thirty-eight. Seeing none, those matters are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those are approved. Mister Garcetti would like us to reconsider item thirty-one.
If we continue?
If there's no objection, let us, that was thirty-one, if no objection, let's open the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Thirty-one is now before us again, and Mister Garcetti requests a continuance for one week. All right. All right, Mister Clerk, what does that bring us to?
Items thirty-nine through forty-eight, with the exception of items forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six that were continued by the closed session items, do you wish to hold these on the desk?
Yes, let's hold those.
Back to the items called special, item seven was called special by council member Labange.
Mister Labange, item seven is now before us.
Thank you. Could I have staff at the center table, please?
There's a staff here on this, Prop K assessment. Is the staff on that item, please come forward.
Staff? For Prop K? Good, okay, good.
Okay, we'll hold it on the desk for just a moment. That brings us to item sixteen, I believe. There are two reports on the file. Is there a motion?
I approve the Commerce Committee report, Mister Carters' ascension.
All right, so Commerce, Energy Report is now moved. Any discussion? Seeing none, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That matter is approved.
Madam President, I'm sorry again, the Community Development Department just informed me they'd like item fifteen to be continued, which we approved. We consider that one as well.
All right, we've had a request to reconsider the action we took on item fifteen, so let's open the roll. Close the roll on reconsideration. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Mister Garcetti requests a continuance till Friday. So that will be the order on that.
Madam President, if I may, do forthwith on number eight, please.
Number eight will be forthwith, per the question of Mister Reyes. Mister Clerk, what is that?
Item twenty-one was called special by Councilman Carters.
Let me recognize, Councilman Carters.
Thank you very much. This item is relative to the San Fernando Valley Fair, which has been going on since nineteen forty-six out in the San Fernando Valley. That makes it an institution that's over fifty years old. Four years ago, the San Fernando Valley Fair was looking for a permanent place to have their annual fair. And they actually went out to Cast Lake, which is outside of the city of Los Angeles and outside of the San Fernando Valley. That shouldn't happen. One of the things that Councilman Alex Padilla's been working very hard on, which is to get them a permanent place, and so far has, damn seems to be the best venue. It's a venue that sometimes has had some problems and some concerns from the surrounding community, but as the fair starts to have their subsequent meetings, at one time they were having problems having a quorum because they didn't have enough pointies that are appointed by the state of California. Myself and Alex Padilla and various elected officials in the San Fernando Valley actually got them some more names in Sacramento and now they have enough people to have a quorum. In other words, it's moving forward, it's getting stronger. This is an institution that we need to keep in the San Fernando Valley, and this is an institution that I think that is a good thing for the city of Los Angeles. So what this motion is about, and I hope you all join me in supporting the extension of the sunset. Alex Padilla got an extension to two thousand three, and now it's time to extend that. And on behalf of Alex Padilla and myself and the rest of the valley members, you join us in supporting this motion. Thank you.
All right, we've heard from Mister Carters with the amending motion that has now been circulated. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That matter is approved.
Still on the desk is item seven, called special by Councilmember Labange.
All right, I believe we have staff now present. Let me recognize Councilmember Labange.
Thank you, Madam President. Members, Prop K is extremely important to the health of all of Los Angeles, and this is the annual assessment that they're gonna give. Neil, are you gonna give the report? If you would, just give a report and you can do it on my time. And we'll hear about the many good things that the department is doing in conjunction with other to bring exciting things to our parks. You have before you, council members, the two thousand four, two thousand five Prop K assessment report. Just to let you know, this report is required to be submitted as part of the overall assessment for Prop K on an annual basis. It's submitted by the city engineer to the county to initiate the assessment process for the annual twenty-five million dollar Prop K assessment. Just to let everyone know, the material herein reflects the recommendations of the Prop K steering committee, which are based on recommendations from regional voluntary neighborhood oversight committees. There's one for each region of the city, three regions. We meet with them on a annual basis to go over the list of projects, the priorities, and the recommended funding amounts for each project. This year we had a competitive grant cycle, which is done every two years. So the list before you includes recommendations for competitive grant projects over the next two years, which is approximately nine plus or minus million dollars of the two years' worth of assessments. So that's nine million out of fifty million over the two years. Just to let everyone know, the projects on the Prop K program are moving forward. We're working with each of the council districts, the steering committee, the RV NOCs, and the local VNOCs, which are neighborhood oversight committees for individual projects, or in the case of the competitive non-recreation parks projects, for the individual council districts. Each council district has an L V N O C for all the competitive projects. Just to let you know, a working group between Recreation and Parks Bureau of Engineering, the CLA, CAO, and Mayor's Office has been doing a great job over the past two years since engineering has taken over the program. We've developed a good team and have the projects moving forward. With that, I'd like to recommend that this be approved by the council today. Thank you. Neil, thank you very much, and members, I know probably you individually or your staff have been briefed on this. It's a very important document as we deliver to the people of Los Angeles these important recreation facilities, so I just wanted to call to the attention of this. And Mister Echeverria sat at the center table. Mister Echeverria, evidently you wanna add?
No, only that this is the first part of the statutory process that you're required to take in order to levy that twenty-five million dollar assessment in mid to late June, you'll receive the actual list of projects, the actual imposition of the assessment at that time. And I know how we try to work closely with neighborhood councils, but also there are park councils. What's interesting is, you talk about the library department has friends of libraries, sometimes these groups don't all get together. What type of engagement are we having with neighborhood councils on this document to date? I can't speak specifically. Okay, neighborhood councils, I can however tell you that there are VNOCs, volunteer organizations that are set up to review all of the projects that are proposed to be built and make recommendations both through the council office and to the steering committee and ultimately, of course, to your body.
I know, I just wanted to make a friendly amendment that in the next year's report, in the next coming twelve months, we have an outreach to our neighborhood councils, the over eighty neighborhood councils, so there's some integration to make sure that neighborhood councils welcome the hard work of the volunteers who help set aside the priorities for parks. Because sometimes there's competitive interest in activism, whether someone's in one area or the other, but then neighborhood councils have an outreach, and possibly at one of the mayor's conferences that he has on neighborhood councils, they're gonna have a special on this. Because I'm having sometimes where not all the people who are involved in neighborhood councils are involved in parks and vice versa, then we try to do some of the parks. Why didn't we know about it? Well, there's an integration and outreach that has to take place. So that's a friendly amendment. I gotta, do you need a second, Madam President, for friendly amendment?
Mister Garcetti, is that right?
Mister Garcetti is very friendly this morning, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Labange. Mister Ludlow.
Madam President, I just wanted to also rise and thank Councilmember Labange for his work on this. And this is a day to tribute Mike Hernandez. Mike, thank you for your leadership in making these funds available for kids in parks throughout Los Angeles. We applaud you for your leadership years ago to make this day come true. And I would also support the concept that Councilmember Labange is raising in terms of ensuring that some of the neighborhood councils are given a little bit more involvement. But I do want to take a minute to say thank you to Record Park staff and to all the volunteers that work on RV NOCs. It can be a challenging process, you're dealing with a lot of dynamics, and this is really community empowerment in terms of where local dollars were earmarked, projects were devised and created at the local level. Record Park staff has gotten out and involved, they've done a great job interfacing with engineering, and then community people have a chance to oversee the final design and construction processes. So we salute you guys, and I rise to encourage, and I vote on this, and again, thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Mister Ludlow. We have the recommendation now before us. Mister Clerk, Labange?
I just wanted to thank Mike Hernandez again. Stand up, Michael. Give Mike Hernandez a big hand, because he was the one who pushed. Thank you, Martin, for, remember, Michael, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Labange. The matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That matter is approved, we'll send it forthwith. What remains on the desk?
That leaves the closed session items.
All right, we are going to have to clear the chambers now, so we can go into matters on the agenda to discuss with our attorney in closed session. Would everyone please, who is not involved in our closed session item, please prepare to leave the room? All right, we are back in public session. Mister Clerk, what is before us?
On item forty, there's a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand in the case of Gloria Estrada versus City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That matter is approved.
On item forty-one, there's a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand in the case of Glenda Navarro versus City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is also approved.
On item forty-two, there's a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of four hundred and ninety-five thousand in the case of Ricardo Bercher versus City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That's approved.
On item forty-three, there's a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand in the case of Glasser Brother Bale Bonds versus City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
It's approved.
And on item forty-seven, there is a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand in the case of Farhana Mohammed versus City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That matter is approved. We will send item fourteen forthwith, per Ms. Gruel's request. Anything remaining on the desk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused on Wednesday, June ninth, for personal business, meets council policy.
Mister Weiss is excused.
And Councilmember Ludlow requests to be excused Friday, May fourteenth, for personal business, a motion is required.
Mister Zine moves, Mister Weiss seconds, Mister Ludlow is excused on Friday, the fourteenth.
The desk is clear, Madam President.
All right, are there any announcements, members? Mister Labange, for an announcement?
Yes, members, this weekend in North Hollywood at NoHo, there's a NoHo Art Festival on Lancashire from eleven to eight P M. And we ask all who's hearing it to come take the red line to North Hollywood and enjoy a beautiful walk down Lancashire and see many artisans and entertainment this weekend, the NoHo Art Festival, Saturday and Sunday, the fourteenth and fifteenth of May.
Thank you, Mister Labange. Any other announcements? Any adjourning tributes? Mister Labange, also, could everyone please rise for adjourning resolutions? Mister Labange?
Thank you, members. This man lived a great life. His name was Pat Moore, and he lived in the Los Feliz Oaks of Los Angeles for many, many years. He lived to be over ninety years old, and he was very blessed in his life to have a wonderful family of a wife, Emmy, and two daughters, and a number of grandchildren and great-grandchildren. But the beautiful thing about Pat Moore is he loved his neighborhood and he loved planting trees and was single-handedly responsible in joining with the Los Feliz Improvement Association and replanting the Deodor pines that had aged. And I remember stopping once on Edgemont, Los Feliz, one day, like last week when it was so warm, and Pat was borrowing somebody's hose from their yard to water a freshly planted Deodor tree. He was an absolutely wonderful man and an activist with the Griffith Park as well in the Ferndale area. And interestingly enough, he was a child star as a baby. He was in the Ten Commandments, D W Griffiths movie, as the baby being carried by Moses, I believe it was. But Pat Moore, a beautiful man, and I ask that we adjourn in his memory on this day. And Madam President, I also ask that we adjourn in the memory of Francisco Ordono, who was born on June fourth, nineteen oh eight. And he was a U S Army Ranger, a paratrooper who brought liberation to the Philippines. After the war, he worked at the United States Postal Service for twenty-nine years, retiring in nineteen seventy-three. He and his wife always have been active members in the Valencia Association of California, and he's survived by his wife, and we ask that we adjourn in his memory as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Labange. Other members? Mister Zine?
Thank you. Request for adjourned in memory, I have two. First is Pastor Richard A. Lau, passed away March first. Pastor Lau was the senior minister of Calvary Baptist Church for twenty-three years. After he retired, he served as pastor to pastors with K K L A Radio in Los Angeles. He was well-known in the community of Burbank for his advocacy of Christian unity. He survived by his wife, Beth. He survived by his wife Beth, his daughter Kim, his sons Andy and Tony, and his son-in-law Joel Papenfuss, and four grandchildren. May Pastor Richard A. Lau rest in peace. And my second is the father-in-law Frank Bush, Principal Inspector, Code Enforcement for Building Safety, and that's Nealan Wendell Finch, passed away May eleventh. Mr. Finch was born June twentieth, 1922. He was eighty-one years of age at passing, born in Washington, D.C., longtime resident of Reseda. Served in the Navy during World War II and was married to a lovely wife, Mary, for fifty-six years. After his retirement, Mr. Finch and his wife moved to Palmdale. He's the father-in-law Frank Bush, again, Principal Inspector, Code Enforcement for the San Fernando Valley, was a great husband, father, and friend who will be greatly missed. He survived by his wife, Mary, and daughters Judy Bush, Carol Finch, sons Larry, Ron, and Robert. And may Nealan Wendell Finch rest in peace.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Prince W. Green, Sr. Many of you may have awakened this morning to television coverage of a fire that took place this morning in my district. It's a very tragic, tragic loss today. Prince Green is survived by his wife, Irma Green, their two children, Walt Green, Andrea Ricard, five grandchildren, five great-grandchildren. Mr. Green was known as a worldwide traveler. He worked for the County of L.A. as a purchaser for over thirty years and a strong fraternity man. He's ninety-six years old. His birthday, May thirteenth, '07, would have been ninety-seven years old tomorrow.
I would also like to have the council adjourn in the memory of Mary Leighton Thompson, who died peacefully on April twelfth. She was a well-known artist and community activist who had been born in Massachusetts, but came west at the age of ten with her widowed mother, Margaret Leighton, who was a prominent author of young adult books. As a girl, Mary rode horseback along the coast of Santa Monica to the Bayonne Wetlands, implied Del Rey, and that's where she fell in love with the coastal landscape of Los Angeles and began expressing that love through art. Beginning with paintings of horses, then landscapes, her work brought recognition as one of the West's most talented artists. She was a member of the Pacific Art Guild and Women Artists of the American West. Her most successful work with over 1,000 prints sold is titled "Summer Solstice." It's a Grandma Moses-style painting showing a busy summer crowd scene on the beaches of Playa Del Rey in the 1960s. As she delved further into the history of the area, she became interested in the story of its Native Americans, the Garbiolina and Tongva people who populated this area. And she then did a Native American village scene titled "We Ots Children." And she became very active twenty years ago in the efforts to save and restore the Bayonne Wetlands, becoming a board member of Friends of the Bayonne Wetlands and the director of the Dune Restoration Project. Her knowledge and extensive enthusiasm brought out thousands of volunteers every weekend. Until she became ill, she was at the wetland virtually every day, tending plants, teaching children, and observing the wildlife. She had a memorial service actually last Saturday at the wetlands, where she was well-remembered by all. So I ask the council adjourn in her memory. Call the roll.